Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Present.
Alderman Steve Smith, City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Hinchem.
Here.
You've been provided a copy of the minutes of previous meeting for the regular session of July 13th, 2021. If you had a chance to check those minutes, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion carries without opposition. Next item would be proclamations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor. And I really don't have anything, but I have a thanks that I'd like to convey. Many of you know that Tennessee Picnic celebrated the 8th of August this past weekend. It was a very much scaled down version of our usual activities, but it went very well. I'd like to thank everyone in the room who participated in helping us set it up and get it started, including the city of Newport, who allowed us to use facilities at the Riverwalk, our colleague, Ms. Luanna Odinger, who gave us some great publicity on her radio station, and others who were present that helped us out. And Chief Schultz with his deputies at our traffic control at the city park during the run walk. Probably leaving someone out, but I still appreciate it. And I think Lynn did do a nice video for us through the chamber, and we really appreciate everything you did. Tim Dockry, of course, also helped us out. So if I've left anyone out, charge it to my head and not my heart. Thank you.
Pardon me? Pardon me.
Forget it now.
Thank you, colleague. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think as everybody is aware, the COVID has had a resurgence and has reared its ugly head within the city. We have had one employee test positive and has been out. Fortunately, they weren't adversely affected, and we should be back to work Thursday. We've had a couple of other employees that have had to be quarantined, and we're just going to go with it as we can. Hopefully, this thing will do like it did in Europe and start to go back down in a week or two, if it follows the same trend as it did over there. But the numbers are up in the region. It's amazing. They've tripled and quadrupled in some places around us. And ours are up around 170 right now here, after being down to single digits. And so we're going to continue to do our due diligence as much as possible, but we have to stay open and in business. So just try to recommend to everybody, if they've not been vaccinated, to get vaccinated. Our employees are right around 40% that have been vaccinated, which is not very good out of 125 or 30 employees. So, you know, the person that tested positive, it was not a choice on their behalf about the vaccine. They're allergic to, they can't take anything that was incubated in an egg. They're allergic to eggs. So they can't take a flu shot or anything. So it wasn't a choice by them. They just couldn't take it. But they have, they have developed the virus, fortunately, without any adverse reaction so far. The other thing, or the next thing I want to talk about, and I'm not going to get too off in depth on it because it would be here longer, I'd take longer than Frank's going to take if I got too deep off into this. But within your packet, in the sleeve of your book, you have this sheet right here. And this is a list that Fire Chief Shelton put together at my request to show about training that we are planning on having for our men. And we were looking at joining the Tennessee Association of Rescue Squad as an associate member. A lot of fire departments have done that. And by being an associate member, it allowed us to get training at a discounted rate. And we got somehow, we got caught up into a feud, for lack of a better term, that has been going on between the emergency management, the county emergency management director and the Cock County Rescue Squad. And, you know, I've met with the emergency management director, I've met with the Rescue Squad to try to get to the bottom of what was going on and how we got pulled into it. And so I think I've kind of got it worked out. I think they understand. I was very clear to them, to the Rescue Squad in particular, and also to the emergency management director, that, you know, we are committed, the city of Newport is committed to the Rescue Squad. We would never recommend or be a part of trying to do away with the Rescue Squad in any way, form, or fashion. But they, they were convinced that, that we were going to play a role in trying to eliminate the Rescue Squad. And so when our membership came up at the state annual meeting, where they vote on your membership as far as being an associate member of the Rescue Squad organization, they recommended against allowing us to be allowed in as an associate member. They did the same for the county. And, and so we didn't get in. And I was, I was pretty upset about that. I won't kid with you. Of course, I didn't know all this other drama was going on behind the scenes. You know, I learned a lot during this investigation into how we got pulled into that. But nevertheless, what they have done is going to cost us money. Because we're not, you know, we'll still get the training, you know? And to me, that was kind of the silliness of the whole maneuver. The only thing they accomplished by fighting us being an associate member is they didn't knock us out of being able to go to the training. They just knocked us out of the discount. We can still go get the training. Anybody can. Anybody can go get the training. But you have to pay a higher price if you're not a member or associate member. And so I, you know, I told them plain, look, you know, if this costs the city of Newport money, then my recommendation is going to be that that money come out of your pocket, not mine. Because we give them $12,000 a year of free money. And if, and again, it may not, because I think I've got it smoothed over, but they don't know if they can, it may be July of next year before they can vote on us again as far as being associate members. But I still, even though I get where they're coming from, I still don't appreciate what happened to us. And, you know, I kind of, I feel, even though they felt like, for whatever reason, the conclusion they came to that we were a part of this behind the scenes dealing that's trying to get, allegedly trying to get rid of them, they should have come, I felt like they should have come and asked about it, you know? Are you guys doing this? Or whatever? Instead of just taking it, you know, and running with it. But anyway, I told them that until this was resolved, and they said they'll try to work with us to resolve it. But until this is resolved, if it costs us money, it is going to be my recommendation that it come out of their donation. Because they shouldn't have done that just to cost us money. And that's the only thing it accomplished. By, you know, working against us being an associate member, it just makes us have to pay a higher price for the training. We can still get it. We just have to pay more for it. And I think they should suffer that loss and not us. But maybe we can fix it. I told them, you know, after we kind of went back and forth on why they thought what they thought, you know, I said, okay, you know, we've worked, we've worked through all this, so how do we fix it? And they said they would try to fix it, but they may not be able to fix it till July. So I know some of you had heard about it, had called and asked me about it, what's going on. And, and I explained it kind of like here in a nutshell. But now, I had almost an hour and a half meeting with the emergency management director and almost a two-hour meeting with the representatives of the Rescue Squad. And that was the leadership of the Rescue Squad. And I, there is a problem going on between the Rescue Squad and emergency management. There are hard feelings there on both sides. That, it's like I told them, that is nothing to me, you know? All I'm responsible for are the people in the city of Newport and the employees of the city of Newport. And we're committed to doing the best job we can do for the, for the people that we serve and try to protect. And so I want my people to be as trained as possible, to be able to perform the duties necessary to protect the people in this town. And we're going to do that. And, you know, whether or without the support of whoever, I don't care who it is. And, but I am not going to get caught up into the politics of what, whatever is going on between the Rescue Squad and the county. That's their problem, not our problem. Jeremy and I had a nice, long meeting yesterday morning. He, you know, I wish he could have been here last week to, to meet with the Rescue Squad when I did, but his mother was having surgery and he had to be out of town. And I get that and respect that. But I went over it in detail with him yesterday. And, you know, we, we're going to do whatever we can to try to fix this on our end. But between, like I say, the county and them, that's, that's their deal. I just, I do not want to be caught up into it. And I don't know, you know, they, the stories they told, I'm not going to get into any of that. It's, you know, but they, they ran parallel quite a bit.
And Alderman, regular session, order please. Our first item on the agenda is a presentation, public hearing and a presentation of the bike pedestrian plan for downtown corridor through the TDOT RPO grant, community direct, development director Gary Carver.
Thank you, Mayor. You might remember last month, we had the Complete Streets presentation. This is the second firm I've been working with, kind of at the same time as the firm we saw last month, to help develop our trail system. We had things that were outside of downtown last month in the Complete Streets plan. This is more geared toward downtown and improving our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Some of it is, basically, some of it's just going to be painting, and some of it is going to possibly look at us reworking some things in the future as far as our sidewalks and building, possibly bike lane, or buildings, a lot of paint. But, so that's a lot of that. But we are self-contained downtown in this one. The move toward pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly downtowns is something that's coming back around from the 50s and 60s before everybody had a car. And we're about to, in the near future, have a very large bicycling community passing through here, well, not here, but Hartford, very close by, that could possibly want to see something like this, that they're going to come in our town, as well as Hartford to spend money. So I've given, I've given my friends here instructions on how we need to get this done, because we know we've got to hear the audit reports, not too. So Drew, you got me?
Yeah. Gary, can you hear me?
I can. I'm going to bump you up a little bit. You go ahead and get started.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us tonight. As Gary said, we're going to go over just the draft recommendations for the downtown Newport bicycle pedestrian plan. So I'll dive right in. Before we get started, I do just want to quickly make a couple of acknowledgements. Obviously, we've been working closely with Gary and his crew with the city of Newport. But also, this, this particular grant was administered by the East Tennessee Development District and Concert with TDOT. And so I do want to just make sure that I recognize Don Brown with East Tennessee Development District and Rhonda Sawyer with TDOT for their leadership and guidance throughout this process. But anyway, today's agenda, what I wanted to talk about was really just go over the issues and opportunities that, that we attempted to address with the plan, introduce the plan recommendations themselves, and then just finish up with some concluding remarks about implementation and funding. So when I say issues and opportunities, I really just mean the problems that we've identified or the things that the plan recommendations are going to be working to counteract. Quickly, though, as Gary said, just so everybody's clear, I know there's a couple of different planning activities going on in Newport right now. This is our area of focus for this particular effort. So you can see it is really just the downtown core area, largely along Main Street and Broadway, bound by Cosby Highway over there on the west and Bear Avenue to the east. So that's really the area that we're working in. But in terms of the issues and opportunities we identified, it's really fourfold. So what we wanted to do was complement the other revitalization and redevelopment efforts that are going on. This plan is not happening in a vacuum. There are a lot of other exciting things going on in downtown Newport that have been underway here for a couple of years. We also wanted to better promote consistency for sidewalk facilities downtown, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. As Gary said, with some of the exciting stuff happening over in Hartford, and just general national trends, we did want to try to provide facilities for bicyclists that may visit the area or may live in the area, traveling through downtown and going to businesses in the district. There's really not any designated places for them to ride currently. I finally just ensure that, you know, complementing these sidewalk facilities and bikeway facilities, that they're safe, well-spaced, and well-designed crossings. And again, just to talk, just to, you know, acknowledge some of the other downtown efforts that are going on. You know, the downtown plan, which was begun several years ago, was certainly a major starting point for us. And another key effort that we coordinated with was the Newport Streetscape Master Plan, in particular, some of the redevelopment, some of the redevelopment initiatives that it outlined. But with that, I'll just jump right into the recommendations and go over these and give you some examples of each. Basically, the way that we organized it was threefold. So we tackled sidewalks, bikeways, and crossings. And I'll do that now in that same order. So as I spoke, I spoke to you just a second ago about sidewalks, one thing we wanted to do was to better promote consistency downtown. Up on this figure, you may or may not be able to see, I can't see what you see, so hopefully it's legible. But we have the approximate widths of sidewalks downtown, which is a really good proxy for the quality. And really, the big takeaway from this figure is that a lot of the sidewalk facilities downtown are in great shape. They don't need anything. They're seven feet wide, there's tons of space, they're really, really high-quality facilities. There are others, however, for example, on Main Street, west of Woodlawn, where they're maybe not so great. So where you have sidewalk widths of three to four feet in areas that we could, that maybe could use some improvement. So after talking with Gary and Don and the rest of the team, we realized that with all of the, with all the current infrastructure there, whether that's buildings, whether that's utilities, that going in and trying to fix these sidewalks piecemeal might be challenging from an implementation standpoint. So we decided to build on the existing regulatory tools that the city has. So one of those, of course, is a sidewalk ordinance that already covers part of our downtown area. And so in order to make sure that, that, you know, implementation isn't overly expensive or disruptive, and that it's also taking place with the organic growth and redevelopment of downtown, we proposed a standalone sidewalk ordinance for downtown itself. So this is quite similar to the existing sidewalk ordinance. There are a couple of other carve-outs that are specific to the downtown district. For example, that, you know, a business that's damaged in a fire may not be necessarily subject to the requirements. But we do include this with the final report as a potential regulatory tool to address that sidewalk inconsistency that we talked about. So that's a sidewalk issue. Another thing that we tackled was bikeways, of course, with this being a bikeway pedestrian plan. So up here on the screen now is sort of a general overview of what the facility recommendations are in the plan. So just to highlight them quickly, on Cosby Highway, all along Broadway, and up Bear Avenue, we do have proposed bike lane. So what that means is it is a separate space on the roadway for bicyclists. And I'll show you what that looks like here in just a second. We also have that on McMahon as well. On some of the other roadways, so for, for example, Jefferson, between some of the lower, lower-volume, lower-speed streets, as well as Main Street, we have a shared lane. So this is where there's not necessarily a separated or segregated space for the bicyclists. And it is just trying to make sure that bicyclists and motorists alike are aware that bicyclists can use the full lane. And again, I'll show examples of these here in just a second. But just to breathe a little life into these recommendations, I did want to highlight two locations along Broadway. So the first is near Jefferson, where there's not currently any on-street parking. And the other one is down near McSweene, where we do currently have on-street parking. So along Broadway. So with the no-parking proposed condition, the lane widths out there are pretty wide, as you might, as you might be aware. And there's generally plenty of space to put in a, an on-street bike lane. So what we have here are two 10 and 1/2-foot lanes with two 5-foot bike lanes. And those are generally consistent with TDOT design standards and national best practices. This next one may be a little bit more, I don't know, disruptive or interesting. But where there is parking now, in order to accommodate the, the on-street bikeway facility, we're actually proposing removing that on-street parking along Broadway. And, you know, there are already other on-street parking facilities along some of the cross streets. There's also a city public lot. So in talking with Gary and his team, it sounded like that's something that in terms of a parking supply issue could be accommodated. But in order to get that linear east-west on-street bikeway facility through downtown, with all the constraints that are there, the parking would have to give way to an on-street bikeway facility. So that's what Broadway would look like throughout the entirety of the study area. Moving on to some other areas that I wanted to highlight, I mentioned that we have some areas where we have shared lane facilities. Main Street is one of those areas, largely due to some of the major constraints out there, the railroad being the big one, obviously. But I did just want to show you what those look like. So along Main Street, west, and by this I mean west of McMahon, this is generally what we're talking about. So we have the 15-foot lanes that are out there and a, an on, an on-street share of, you know, share of parking. Obviously, this is going to require some, hopefully some patience on behalf of local residents and roadway users. And also some discretion on behalf of the cyclists. We will have that parallel on-street facility. But for those that do need to use Main Street, we'll have this facility for them. When we go east of McMahon, we do currently have some on-street parking there as well. So east of McMahon, we still maintain those sharos, 13-foot lane widths. In this case, we're proposing that the existing diagonal on-street parking be converted to parallel. That frees up a little bit of space. That'll make the roadway conditions a little bit safer for cycling users. And also, having people back out of those, of those diagonal spots can be really dangerous for users as well. So that's the other, I guess, change in terms of the parking situation that is assumed within the plan. And finally, I wanted to highlight a couple of the crossing improvements that we're talking about. We have a new crossing at the Fruitjar Alley redevelopment area there near Wall Street, Jefferson Avenue. I'll show you that in just a second. And then another major area that we identified in terms of crossing issues are, of course, where you have the Main Street couplet and, and the rail, the rail line. Those can be pretty challenging to navigate for users. So at Wall Street, we do have a mid-block crossing proposed. This can come in concurrently with the Fruitjar Alley redevelopment project or earlier on. In this case, there would not be, there's no signalization proposed. But we do have a pedestrian-activated beacon that users can turn on, just to make sure that motorists are aware that they're entering the crosswalk. Finally, in this particular example, is at McSweene, these are proposed at each of those major railroad crossings, where you may have people crossing to get to the facility that you all are at tonight, or the police station, or what have you. We do just have some improvements included to make sure that pedestrians know where they're supposed to cross, that motorists are aware that pedestrians will be in the roadway, and really just to, again, increase that visibility and make people feel a little bit safer. Because crossing, I don't know, it's 20, 25 feet of pavement, out of a bunch, bisected by a rail line can be a little hairy. So that would increase the safety conditions at those locations as well. So that is a, that is kind of a quick tour of the recommendations. Before I move into the concluding remarks, I will just emphasize all of the figures that I just showed you and all of the explanations. Of course, all that is detailed in the final report as well. So if you want to look at anything more closely later on, it's all there. Finally, in terms of implementation and funding, we did provide some consideration for that as well. So we're not just giving you a bunch of lines and dots on a map. We did try to break these out into individual actionable projects. We provided some planning-level unit cost estimates as well, so you can sort of get a better idea of what the magnitude cost difference among these various projects might be. And then, you know, in addition to the cost estimates of the projects, we also tried to provide some, some funding sources, some funding tools that might be available to you to help implement some of these recommendations. So obviously, the TDOT Multimodal Access Grant is the one that I think most people are familiar with, and certainly one of the most popular coming out of these TDOT planning activities. There are others, though. For example, the Tennessee Department of Health has the Healthy Built Environment Grants. So there are a couple of different tools that are out there in terms of matching up state funding and leveraging that for some of these improvements. And the plan does include just a quick table outlining what, what some of these grant programs are, the activities that might be eligible, what the funding structure is, and how and when to apply. And that concludes the presentation this evening. So Gary, I'll hand it back over to you to see if there's any questions or further discussion.
Thank you, Drew. Couple of things I don't think I threw out. This was, this whole plan was grant-funded through TDOT. So for the local, yeah, TDOT and the local planning region. And so it didn't cost us anything, neither did the other one. It just gave, and none of this is something that we have to do. It's just recommendations from planning nerds like me and these guys that get, you know, put it all out in front of you, kind of find the best way to do it. Do you guys have any questions while we've got the team on here?
Is it going to connect anything with what Riverwalk stuff? Does it connect anywhere there? Is it entirely separate from all that?
No, it would connect. There would be, there would be very clear connectors between Riverwalk, where it, where it is now, where it's going to go in the future, and this, this path system. We'll have wayfinding signs to get people from, if they're on Broadway and they want to find the Riverwalk. You may have seen, you may have seen some of the signs that went up recently. But we'll have wayfinding signs to kind of guide people to the Riverwalk, or guide people that are on the Riverwalk toward the courthouse, or City Hall, or things like that. Yes, sir, it does connect.
But now, keep in mind, the Riverwalk is not for bicycles. It is for pedestrians only. We don't have bicycles on the, the Riverwalk. So just to keep that in mind as far as the connector. We want pedestrians to know how to get on and access the walk, but we don't intend to have bicycles on the Riverwalk.
Now, the bicycles will tie in more to some of the stuff that we had done with the other, where basically, we will, we want people to be able to, if you so choose, to bike from any residential neighborhood in the city of Newport, to be able to safely get to downtown, or out west, or Cosby Highway, or a corner or something. So that's, it all ties in together. It all helps you to get the bigger grants, like they showed the list up there for the transportation grants. It helps for development. People, developers want to see that you've got some kind of plan, that you've actually put something in place to, to have these very walkable and bikeable friendly neighborhoods and cities.
Just a point of clarification, Gary. You said that this, the plan or consultants were paid by, through a grant?
Yes.
Not the, not the entire project is being paid?
No, no, yeah, just the planning. Would have to go into different pools of money to, to pay for some of the other stuff.
But are there grants available for?
There are, yes.
And any of this project that we do would be done through grants. We would have a match, but, but the bulk of it would be done by grant money. And we're currently doing a multimodal project going west. And right now, we're waiting on, we've done what we can do to this point, and then we've got it in the hands of the engineer, and he's waiting on guidance from the, the state on how we need to move forward with it. So these are all part of a master plan. You know, this, this is not going to be done this year, next year. But we're just trying to put to put the pieces in place so that everything flows smoothly when it does come time to apply for the grants and so on. Because, we can show constant progress and commitment on our part, and that helps in the, the grant process as far as being awarded the grants when they see a commitment and a long-term investment on our part.
Tim, have you heard anything else about the River Walk, U.A. and?
It's the same thing. We're in the same exact boat with it, that we are the multimodal. It's in the hands of the engineer, and we met with him earlier in the summer, and we're just waiting on him to hear back from these other groups that he has to talk to, and the environmentalists and all these folks, on what our next step needs to be.
We're just getting to a dead end down at some time.
Yeah. We're just, we're in a holding pattern right now, waiting on guidance from the state on what to do to move forward.
Once we pull the trigger on, say, this project, what would the timeline be for completion?
It just depends on what, because what the team did was break a lot of it down into smaller things. So, we're going to repave Main Street.
So, it'd be in phases, kind of?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to repave Main Street very soon, this fall, I think. And, I'm going to submit the parking plan because, like we did on Ms. and McSweene, a lot of something that Drew had said, or their recommendation is to change up some of that parking, because it actually goes against our own code, that the spaces can't come out and cause that much of an obstruction of the road. So, I mean, that, that kind of stuff can be done. We can do that and do some cost savings. That's paying, man. Some of the other stuff may be, you know, if we can do it in-house and save a little bit of money, we'll do it, and other stuff, we may have to outsource a little bit, but it just would depend. I mean, you could see little changes over time, I think.
What our cost speed improvement as well?
Depending on how big of a chunk we wanted to attack with any bit of it, but for the most part, yes.
There you have questions. Is that it, Gary?
That's all. Thank you very much for, for enjoying 15, 15 minutes of six months' worth of work, I think. But, I mean, really and truly, you gotta, you gotta have all that. You gotta distill it all down into, into something that, that we can just put out there for not only us, but the public to understand and see what we would be doing if we were going to make the, make the investment in doing one of these projects, so.
I think the public would really appreciate sidewalks and bike lanes.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Well, and these are the things that we have to do if we're going to make downtown viable as a destination. It's just, it's the standard now that everybody has gotten used to, and they expect it if they come to, to visit and walk around and shop. This, this is what they expect.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you all.
Gary, wanted to comment saying we need to motion this to get to a group.
Okay.
I think it's something like that, yeah.
I gotta go follow up with him for a minute. You can go. You can start the real meeting now.
Better hold on to that gavel.